This time, I would like to call the Harden County Board of Education meeting to order. And first of all, we'll say a place for the flag to join us.
Our flag is raised in the line of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And to start, I do have four minutes.
To improve our effectiveness, the Harden County Board of Education commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district in support of district goals and support board decisions.
All right, thank you. And recognitions, and we'll let Mr. John Wright take care of that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You have a rather lengthy list. I know this is the summer, and you probably wouldn't expect such a list, but as you can, when we get into it, you'll understand why we brought these young folks in during their summer break. So, a lot of excitement to talk about this evening. So, if you'll pass that motion, we'll get started, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve resolution. All in favor, second by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bailey Chokes, Bailey here. Come on up, Bailey. Let me tell you why we're recognizing Bailey. Bailey is a rising senior at Central Harden High School, and Bailey will attend the PDS, as in Public Broadcasting Service, Student Reporting Lab in Washington DC later this summer. Come on, Bailey, let me hear you bragging about you. Bailey is in the mass media and television production pathway at the Early College and Career Center, and only 26 students from across the country will attend this very prestigious Journalism Academy. So, congratulations, Bailey. Bailey, you have parents here? Okay, well, stand up, Mom and Dad. And your instructor is here as well. All right, next, we have some student athletes who performed exceptionally well at these state track meets. Jasmine Carroll, are you here? Jasmine, come on up, Jasmine. Jasmine is a rising Central Harden junior. She earned second place in the 3A state track meet earlier this month in shot put with a distance of 40 feet and nine inches, or that's 12.42 meters. Congratulations. Is that not right? What was it? Is it a matter?
Did you say 40?
Forty.
No, 37.
Oh, 37. Tim Pennington and Samantha Dale are track coaches, and they cannot...
Is our parents here?
Our parents here? Yeah, stand up. Lee Carter and Jamarkwes Iyeni? Jamarkwes is here now? Okay, this is Lee Carter. He, Jamarkwes, Lee is a rising sophomore at Central Harden High School, and Jamarkwes is a senior, a rising senior. They are in third place at the state track and field meet earlier this month in the mixed shot put unified competition with a combined distance of 71 feet, four inches, or that's 21.74 meters. Congratulations. Lee also, he gets another medal. Here's why. Because Lee and Graham Hewitt, Graham's, I think his mom told me he was on vacation. Lee and Graham earned second place in the, at the track meet in the two-by-50 meter relay unified by the time of 14 minutes and 1900s. Congratulations. All right, Lee's mom, parents. There we go. Thank you. Alexis Schiller's finished. Alexis here. Alexis is not here?
Yes.
Your parents, come on up, Alexis. Alexis is a upcoming senior at John Harden High School, and she earned a state championship at the 2A track and field meet in the 100-meter hurdle with a time of 14.91 seconds. And state track, her track and field coaches are Leland Warsaw and Joe Stock. Are you guys here? Senior for Alexis?
Uh, no.
No? Okay, all right. Thanks, Alexis, for coming. Savannah Hosfeld, Savannah here? Come on up, Savannah. She is also a senior, rising senior at John Harden High School. She earned second place in the 1600-meter run with a time of 5:1488. Congratulations. Thanks for coming. Josh Morris, Josh here. No, Josh is not here, but we'll brag on him anyway. Here in third place at the track and field meet earlier this month with a, in the high jump with a mark of 6 feet, two inches. Anaya Diamond, is Anaya here?
No.
Okay, she's not here either, but we'll brag on her. She earned second place at the track meet with a 3, in the 300-meter hurdles with a time of 45.10 seconds. Angel Lee, is Angel here?
Angel here.
Okay, come on up, Angel. Angel is a rising junior at North Harden High School. She earned a state championship at the 3A state track and field meet in the girls' shot put with a distance of 40 feet, nine inches. Did I get that one right? Is that right? All right. Thank you. Bring Mom and Dad, your parents here. Myla Lee, is Myla here? Come on up, Myla. Myla earned third place at the state track and field meet in the girls' discus with a distance of 117 feet, three inches, or 35.73 meters.
Mr. Wright? What grade?
Oh, I'm sorry, Myla is a, will be a senior at North Harden. All right, now, we're gonna ask the whole track team from North Harden High School to come up front. And we're gonna let them introduce themselves.
Clear your throat.
Let me tell you why we're bringing the whole track team up, because they earned, as a team, Mr. Chairman, third place at the entire track meet. So, congratulations, ladies. Yeah, say your name and grade, if you don't mind.
I'm Randy Farman, I'm a freshman.
I'm Janeway Watson, I graduated North Harden High School, we went to the University of New York.
I'm Cameron McFadyen, I'm a senior in the fourth.
I'm here to read, and I'm gonna be a junior.
I'm Tyler Williams, and I'm gonna be a sophomore.
I'm Tyler Williams, I'm gonna be a senior.
I'm Angel Lee, I'm gonna be a junior at North Harden.
And I'm Ashanti Watson, I'm gonna be a senior at North Harden.
All right, amen. Congratulations, ladies. Coaches are here. Coaches for the team are PJ Randall, Antonio Jackson, and Erin. All right, thank you, ladies. This is the, Mr. Chairman, the softball team at Central Harden High School. This past weekend, they obviously played in the semifinals. They made it to the semifinals of the state tournament, and on their way there, they defeated Louisville Butler in Pendleton County in the first and second rounds of the state tournament. The Lady Bruins won the fifth region championship for the fifth consecutive season. Their 36-and-8 record and state semifinal finish is the best in the very illustrious history of Central Harden High School. So, congratulations, ladies. We're gonna let you all introduce yourselves, just say your name and your grade that you're gonna be in in August.
My name's Bailey Richardson, I'll be a senior this year.
My name's Angel Ochlock, and I'll be a senior.
My name's Bailey Hardman, I'll be a senior.
I'm Kate Williams, I'll be a junior.
I'm Macy Martin, I'll be a junior.
I'm Melissa Hager, I'll be a junior.
I'm Cindy Green, I'll be a junior.
I'm Massa Jezz, I'll be a sophomore.
I'm Lily Perry, I'll be a sophomore.
I'm Beanna Burton, I'll be a sophomore.
I'm Avery Strayer, I'll be a freshman.
I'll be Camille Please, I'll be a junior.
I'm Heather Breton, I'll be a freshman.
I'm Shad, I'm a grad, I'll be a sophomore.
I'm Melissa Jant, and I'll be a freshman.
I'm Kelsey Waters, and I'll be a junior.
I'm Emma Case, and I'll be a junior.
I'm Casey Getty, and I'm going to University of the Comfort.
I'm Kate Bajer, and I'm going to Georgetown College.
I'm Monica Nichols, and I'll be attending Union College.
I'm Coach Goodman.
I'm George Goodman.
I'm Abby Nuneal.
Andy Bajer.
Congratulations, ladies. Applause as well, the parents, you guys earned this, this much, thank you. Very well deserved.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
All right, thank you, guys. Congratulations, we appreciate you all, hope so. Thanks for coming. Mr. Chairman, I'll job some. Thank you.
That's it. Focus on academics. Mr. Sutton.
Great to be here. I know it's summertime, but we've got a lot going on. I wanna thank our teachers for a great year. I wanna thank coaches, I wanna thank club sponsors, 'cause although it's summertime, I wrote a few of these down, I know it's just a few, but just thinking of things we have going in summertime. You've got kids in our high schools that are representing our district at Choclar Camps of America, Milligan College. You've got students in the Academics Arts and Entrepreneurship for GSP representing our district. You've got camp convention going on right now at one of our elementary schools, summer reading program at two of our sites, school-sponsored summer reading programs through ESS funds, shattered glass program for girl power. That's just to name a few things that are going in our district right now this summer. So, I appreciate our sponsors, our teachers that finished the school year, but they're still going. This is a great example of our coaches that are, that are still going, working with kids. And one of the young ladies, Casey Getty, that was up here tonight, four-time picture of the year at Central Harden, is actually a co-op student in our finance department. And I'm speaking for John, probably, but I can't think of a better young lady to represent a school, to work here in our office, has just been very respectful, hardworking, top-notch work ethic, and says a lot about how that carries over from school into the workforce and the sport. So, very appreciative of young ladies like that that represent us so well.
Mr. Sutton, also wanna point out, we have a large group in Oklahoma City for the Beta Convention this week from elementary school. We had some first-place finishes nationally, that means the entire United States, and we will be, of course...
See them in July.
We'll see them in July, but that's another large group that has a presence.
Any other programs I might have thought? I just knew that.
No, I just know I'm getting updates about the Beta Convention and how well our students are doing there, so.
Doing well, aren't they?
Yes.
All of us, appreciate that. Tonight, I wanna give you a little update on three positions that we were able to have this year through our title funding was transition readiness coaches. We were able to put one of those positions at each of our high schools. I'm telling you, this is a critical position. If we can find ways to keep this position and help it grow with the right job description. Basically, the college career readiness coach, they work with students, they work with families, they work with teachers on scheduling, looking at pathways, helping to make sure a kid is on a college path or a career path. And I've got one of our transition readiness coaches here tonight from North Harden, Ms. Lisa Slaven, who's gonna give you a little data, give you a little feedback on how your year went as a transition readiness coach. So, I'm gonna call Lisa up, and I'll let her talk to us for a few minutes.
She's gone Trojan blue and white.
Absolutely. All right, so I've created a little bit of a visual representation there of some of the things we've been able to accomplish. First and foremost, I would like to thank you guys for allowing this position to be created. The work that the three transition coaches have been able to do across the high schools has been eminent. So, one of the first things, transition is the, looking at college and career readiness in our students for the state accountability system, but our transition coaches have done way more than that. They have worked with students in improving scheduling systems, they've worked with testing, they've also worked tremendously with being able to look at students individually in terms of data and to help them in the next step of their goals. So, what I have for you at the top there is specifically our North Harden data. The first bar, as you can see, the blue is our transition data in college readiness, and that is mean benchmarks on the ACT, and that is last year's data, and then the orange-colored one there is this year's data, and then it goes from college-ready to our career readiness numbers, and then the last column there is our overall transition number for school accountability. One of the things I do want you to know, a lot of the work that was done this year will be evident in our college-ready numbers starting next year, because we did a lot of work in terms of prepping students for ACT, purposeful scheduling, intervention courses, and a lot of that was junior and sophomore classes. So, that will become evident in our numbers for next year when they report on our seniors that have been through all of those transition programs that we put into place. You can see that our career numbers have already gone up from this position. Our transition data coaches were able to look specifically at each individual student, see who was college-ready and also who was in a career pathway. Having somebody specifically look at that data has helped students to be able to be transition-ready when they leave high school. Before, we had COSA testing that was still going on. Those tickets are automatically generated by the state based on the data that the teachers put in, so we don't have any control over who's tested for that. It generates and tells us these students are all ready to test based on the classes that they've taken. However, there are a lot of students that were eligible to take industry certification exams and graduate certified in different career pathways that weren't being COSA-tested. So, one of the things that transition coaches were able to do was to look individually at a student instead of just what's auto-populated based on their schedule, and say, based on knowledge that you've earned through certain classes that you've taken in your career pathways, you qualify for different certification exams. And so, we actually will have more students graduating career-ready and certified in their career pathways this year than we had last year, and obviously, we expect that number to continue to grow through a couple of things that we've put in place. One of those is purposeful scheduling. So, we had a little bit of a training session with everybody involved in scheduling so that they would know more about the pathways. All three of the high schools have been integrating one-on-one scheduling, where they sit down one person with one student at a time and speak directly with them about what their future goals are, college or career-wise, and make sure that they're scheduled in the classes they need to help them meet those goals. So, we hope to see that number continue to increase through some of the things that we've put in place. Our overall transition number, that's an early estimate. Obviously, the exact numbers will come out in the fall when we get the state accountability data, and we actually expect that to be a little bit higher as they add in bonus and things that we will earn for certain kids that were transition-ready. Down at the bottom is just going over some of the other things that we've done this year. So, number one was targeted support. Before, we had classes that were specifically designed to help students increase their ACT score, and students were able to choose to take those through scheduling. They could sit down and say, hey, I wanna take this, I wanna get my ACT score up. But this year, with our transition tracking, we were able to specifically look at students and say, hey, we recommend that you take these ACT prep classes if that fits in your future goals, and they're designed to help you get your ACT scores up. So, those classes, the students are more purposefully scheduled in those. We also created a whole new section so that we have a co-teach available, because we do have a lot of sped students who have college as their future goals, and we wanna make sure that we're giving them the tools and helping them to meet those benchmarks so that they can meet those entrance exam scores that they have to have to get into college. So, that class is added next year as well. There's also a lot of one-on-one meeting with students about transition, and that's not just after high school and transitioning out of, you know, North Harden, Central Harden, John Harden. We also met with eighth graders to help them transition into high school and into our career pathways. We were able to have, one of our middle schools, JTA, came over and they toured all of our career pathway classes that we offer, so they got to go around and see them as well as EC3. And then the other school, we went over to them and spoke with them about all of our career pathways and tried to expand their ideas of what careers are out there, 'cause middle schoolers tend to think very inside the box in terms of careers of what they know exists. So, we tried to expand that and show them how our career pathways lead into a plethora of jobs for them. And then that last box is talking about plans that we already have in place for next year to expand what our transition coaches are doing throughout the district. So, we wanna continue and do more with our middle schoolers to help them get into college and career readiness before they even start high school. One of the goals that we have is for students to come over and be able to do an assessment at some point to see what they're interested in, and then be able to shadow career pathways in our classes that would help them get there. And then we also wanna start moving our way down into the elementary schools and helping those students to be able to transition into middle school as well, and starting with everything that, you know, we could incorporate even at a younger age, including work ethic certification, helping them understand those work ethic standards even at a young age so that we're just instilling them and reinforcing them as they get older rather than that being the first time that they're exposed to them. So, the position itself has had great success already this year, and we look forward to seeing what we're able to do next year as well.
Ms. Lee, then one of the things I shared with the board today during our retreat was the work that you did to have the ASVAB to count toward a whole pathway. Do you mind to share about that experience?
Okay, so, R2C is near and dear to my heart. I'm a former cadet, North Harden graduate of 2004 Drill Team Commander. Sorry, I gotta put all that in there, 'cause I'm super proud of my R2C background. And so, this year was the first year that they were actually removed from accountability. The pathway stayed on as a viable career pathway, but it didn't count for any schools. So, all of our seniors that graduated, having gone through four years of JR2C, are able to enter the military at a higher rank and a higher pay because of their educational background, but schools are not getting credit for any of those students being career-ready. And so, obviously, I thought that wasn't right for not only our students, but also for our military programs. What they're seeing across the state is that the program numbers were already dropping because schools were looking at it and saying, well, if this isn't helping us, then we wanna try and get you into a class that will. And obviously, we always wanna do what's in the best interest of students, and taking them out of a class that is their career pathway and their future goal is not what's in the best interest of students just to meet accountability numbers. So, I was able to get in contact with the powers-that-be at Fort Knox, and actually met with all four national directors of the JR2C programs, the Army, the Marine, the Air Force, and Navy, and all four of them signed off on an industry certificate. So, we're not actually using the ASVAP, the state would not accept that to make those kids career-ready. They said that it's more of an aptitude test. So, what we've created is an industry certification, and once they've met three years of qualifications of having JR2C, and there are some guidelines that fall under that, GPA, some schools look for community service, grades are a huge part of that, attendance is a huge part of that. They already have a list of indicators that allow a student to progress from being a LET 1 or freshman into being a LET 2, sophomore, or LET 3. So, they're able to make cuts based on those qualifications. And if a kid makes it all the way to a LET 3 and/or a LET 4 and a LET 5, then they're able to earn the JR2C industry cert. And that industry certification is giving them the same thing that they've always had, the ability to go into the military at a higher rank and a higher pay based on the career pathway that they completed at our high schools, but it's now being recognized by the state because there is that certification as something that counts towards our accountability. So, next year, we'll, not only will Harden County Schools be getting credit for all of their students in the military pathway, but the entire state will.
Thank you.
We also introduced a new industry certification for our agriculture department. It was the ICV industry cert, and that is part of what helped us get some of our career readiness numbers up. And our ad program did not have industry certs before. They did, but they were not ones that anybody across the state were offering. Mining, for example, was one of the industry certifications that they offered when this transition readiness came through the first time. So, we're excited to start that new one, and our North Harden teachers took right to it. They actually started incorporating the program. It's an online program that goes through modules and trainings, and then there are obviously exams and tests, and they have a final exam that they have to take at the end to be able to earn the certification. And they started incorporating it throughout the year and using it in their classes. There are great lessons on there, there are great activities.
You got a lot of students, did you?
We had 41 that were logged into the program and going through modules and working through those, and some of them will continue to do that next year, 'cause some of them are underclassmen. And then we had 16 that passed the industry certification.
Wow. So, you see the variety.
Yes.
Talking about the military, and we're meeting a lot of kids' needs, and this, this position's critical for us going forward for our college career readiness numbers, 'cause if we can do this, we just gotta work together to make it happen.
Absolutely. Thank you. That's my...
And their principal back there is clapping for them. Okay, brings us down to recognition of visitors, and Mr. Ray Allen Mackey has signed up to speak to us. Ray Allen, you wanna come up to the podium, please?
Good evening, Superintendent Morgan, Chairman Wise, members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you tonight and present my request. I am Ray Allen Mackey, a lifetime farmer in Harden County. I can also be known as a citizen of the county, a landowner, a volunteer, and leader for various civic and business organizations, a parent, and a husband of a former teacher. I have been and am a supporter of Harden County Schools. I have leased a parcel of land of about 100 acres on New Glendale Road for crop production since the early 1980s. On the afternoon of November 20th, 2018, I observed a crew of drilling experts with the necessary equipment to obtain core samples in all areas of the proposed school site. It was a cloudy, rainy day like many days we had last fall, which made it impossible for field work. In fact, we had only harvested about 300 acres of our 1,800-acre soybean crop at that time, November 20th. At this particular time, in this field, the standing crops and soils were saturated, making it impossible for field work. I addressed an employee of the drilling company and asked if they had permission to encroach upon the field and who was responsible for crop damage. He responded that they were not aware of the ownership of the crop. I informed him that I was the owner of the crop and that I had not been notified that they would be working at that time. I further stated that I would expect complete payment for the crop in the field due to their The individual then called their supervisor to confirm that the work had to be completed immediately at all cost. Those were his words. I reminded him one more time that I would expect full payment for the standing crop. I left the field with the belief that the parties responsible for the entry and damage to the area in question would also be responsible for any and all property, which is the crop of which I am the owner. I had not given permission, I was not notified of their presence or intent on that day, I had not been afforded any input or discussion as to the possible outcomes or consequences of their work. These are expectations that I would have for any business or individual, including myself, in any other situation that involves personal property and/or private property After harvest was completed and the average yield of the entire 100 acres was recorded, I made a request to staff, Harden County School staff, for full payment for the 52-bushel soybean yield on 15 acres of crop within the proposed site. As I met with staff, I was informed that Harden County Schools was prepared to pay for the 52-bushel average for one acre of soybeans, based on the estimate of the drilling company of a half acre of damage. Let me remind you that Drilling Company does not reside in this county, and their estimate does not reflect the reality of farming practices and conditions in this county at that time. As I had said earlier, we are in different worlds. In further discussion with staff, a point was made that if I continued with harvest of the area in question, I must have been able to salvage some of this. This is true, only due to the determination as farmers to be good stewards, not to leave anything to waste or any task undone, no matter how difficult or encumbered by the actions of others. The reality is that I had no clear way to determine exactly what was destroyed due to not knowing exactly what the yield would have been from that area in question. This is only a portion of the field that I farm that I have a recorded average yield for. At this point, my mindset could move to the point that we should at least share in the loss of the crop. 26 bushels of the average yield to be paid by those responsible for the damage, 26 bushels possibly harvested by myself with the conditions that were left me from the drilling company. Upon further consideration, I come to you in an effort to be reaching a conciliatory agreement. I would make the following request. I would expect payment of 15 acres of soybeans at a 15-bushel per acre loss. That equals 225 bushel loss at a $10 bushel... That equals two hundred and twenty-five bushel loss at a ten-dollar-bushel average price that left my farm this year. Total of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, plus field damage and harvest complications due to the drilling process, piles of dirt that were left in the crop that my operator had to avoid or consume within machinery that went across the field. Makes a total of three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars payable to myself. I have included my mailing address. I hope you agree with my attempts to make this a fair resolution to this issue. Again, I would not expect anything less from anyone, including myself. Also hope that by doing so, Harden County Schools accepts the responsibility for this situation and will do and take the necessary steps to correct the wrong, to make an unjust right, and to make it imperfect as whole as possible. In doing so, you would confirm my trust and leadership to uphold these values, which I learned from my parents, my community, and my experiences at Harden County Schools, and that you would continue to pass them on to the next generation of students. I am and hope to continue to be a supporter of Harden County Schools. Here it is. And I have copies for everyone here. Would allow me to present some things, and also have a photo that I was taking today of the incident on the black paper.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Ray. We'll flip things over and be a reply from someone else. All right. It brings us down to construction updates, and Rob is here with JRA, and Mr. Billy Parsons is here with Alliance Construction. They're all greens. They asked me to stop the rain, and I stopped it for a little while.
And please continue to do so.
I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. If you have that power, please continue to use it. Well, good evening. I do have, hopefully in your board packet tonight, there are two field reports, one for Lincoln Trail, one for East Harden. And the past week is when those reports were taken. Those have far more detail that I'll get in tonight, but they're full, recent pictures of the activity on the sites. Obviously, both jobs are now under construction. For Lincoln Trail, we've made good progress. The actual building pad has been completed, which has allowed us to go ahead and start footing work on the building. So footings and rebar being placed on the west side, and the northern footings are already in place for the property. Temporary electric service is being fed, and stormwater piping for all of our rainfall is also currently being installed on the northern side of the property, which is the watershed, if you will, the way the site sits.
We're stockpiling the water for right now.
Yeah.
Good.
So, yeah, it doesn't sit too long in that middle part there of the Lincoln Trail site. It'll find its way downhill, I'm sure. For East, similar situation, the earthwork has started. We were, what, a day and a half from...
At the most.
At the most of having that building pad complete, which would have allowed us to start the footings on that project, and timing is everything. So we'll need it to dry out a little bit before the completion of the building pad and allow the footings to begin on that particular project. The site trailer's there. The special inspector for the structures is on site on both of those. Our compaction reports have been coming back good for the footings, so we've not hit any bad soils, but it's still early, so take that with a grain of salt. And obviously, on both, our erosion control measures, Mike's done a great job of putting silt fence up, just in the, or designing it to be put up in the nick of time for all of our rainfall that we had. Sort of on the paperwork side of things, I will say, the shop drawings and sort of reviews of all of that behind-the-scenes information has been going quite well. Alliance sent to us more shop drawings today on East than I can probably count at the moment, so... But it's good to get those early, it keeps the process going along and going smoothly. So Billy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
My main thing was requesting a stop to the rain. It did put us behind as far as getting the work done. We were scheduled to start mobilizing on the East Middle School, on that site, on Monday, this coming Monday, so that's, I talked to that contractor this afternoon, so we've had to push that about seven, ten, seven to ten days out, because we will have to rip that, some of that back up and let it dry out before we can place it back. The special inspector's done a great job on both of those projects. He's been there. The photographs, which Mr. Jones, I think, made and put in there, show you a very good track of what's going on and what to expect. The, I think the critical thing for us, we've got the schedule completed on the Lincoln Trail project. I've got about a hundred and sixty line items that we're starting to look at, and of course, a couple of milestones just to throw out there, the footings for Lincoln Trail, we're looking to have those pretty much done by the end of the month, this month, if, if rain gives us a little opportunity. Now, what we're doing is, we've scheduled the building in three sections, AP and C's the way it's kind of drawn on the drawings. We're starting on the gym on that end, and then we're also starting simultaneously on what we call Area C. So we hope that we're going to be in the middle, but that is certainly is the intent. So we've got, there's two crews that are working on Lincoln Trail. And so it's important from our schedule standpoint, if we get the gym area, that's got the priority right now. The other thing is, the other classroom meeting is a two-story, so we have to look at that as well. Then the middle section is B, and that's kind of where we're going to converge. So all of that is kind of based on, we have got to get the roofs on all three sections. We're looking at either late October or the middle of November, and that's going to almost be the same thing at each. We've got to do the same thing. We've got to get them dried in by the end of the year. We can't, really don't want to slug into December and January. So that's kind of where we're, where we are and where we're going, in the direction that our contractors have and all the subs that are working with us. That's kind of our direction. I know it's a lot of stuff, but that's what we're trying to sort it all out and make sense of all these different components and pieces. What has been helpful for us is that as the contractors, we require them to submit their shop drawings and submittals, they come into Alliance, we review them, and then we forward them over to JRA, then they look at them, and some of them go to Mike and other to the structural, then they come back, and then we notify the contractors, and if there's any changes we've got to make. So there's a lot of little steps in front of all this thing that has to take place, and working together, we're able to kind of make that wheel go around, and it all has to kind of fall into place, but that's our job. And I told someone the other day that they've kind of got the eighteenth now, and that's Alliance and JRA. We know what we're doing, we're going to make it happen.
I give a lot of credit. I've got one of my best staff members, it's Inga Hardman, in my office, and she's been Johnny on the spot on the shop drawings, so she's turning those rounds as fast as she can get to.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I work on the rain. I need a couple of three-day months.
I look at E-Town, and every time I look at the map, I'm seeing going to Barks Town Road or some of West Kentucky Parkway. It's blowing me out every time I look at it.
Billings, you want to give a little report on the asphalt sealing going on? Was there anything you need to report on that?
Looks good.
Where are we sealing asphalt? We've done Central Harden.
Oh, my lord.
I thought we had a picture of it, but we don't.
We did, we did.
Good evening. We have completed the sealing and striping at Central Harden High School.
Right.
The only thing we like up there is a few of the handicap signs. Tomorrow, Vine Grove Elementary will get sealed, and hopefully on Saturday, James T. Alton will get sealed.
Weather permitting?
Yeah. When I say hopefully, that's weather permitting. Then next week, both of those will get re-striped back, and then the next two on the list are Woodland Elementary and North Middle School. Those are the five schools that are slated to be sealed this summer. We are also underway at John Harden High School with the resurfacing project. Scotty started this week, and they've had the big milling machine up here, and she's been going to town, so we've had some concerns about Nolan's event there tomorrow night, but I've talked with Scotty, and they're going to get everything cleaned out and have everything ready to go, and they're supposed to be out there by noon tomorrow, so Nolan should be fine for their event there tomorrow evening. Hopefully, again, weather permitting, they will start resurfacing parking lot next week out there at John.
People, people just don't understand what all activities take place. I had a call the other day about Central Harden, they have a football camp, they were all torn up, they didn't have a place to park. Why did we do sealing while they were having football camp? I said, "Well, when would you prepare us to do it?" "Well, later in the summer." I said, "Okay, where does the fan march at later in the summer when there's nothing else going?" "Well, we don't know."
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
We just got to share this space right now, that's all I can say.
To Mr. Sutton's point, you all certainly do have a whole lot going on over the summer time. And the contractors we have at all of this have done the best, we've done the best we can to try to coordinate with everybody and stay out of everybody's way, but...
The work's got to happen sometime.
A lot of things going on, and it's better to disturb them during the summer than it is during school.
Right.
We do have some other little minor projects going on, drainage and parking lot improvements at EC3, some work at North Park. We sealed the concrete between the two buildings. It turned out really good. If you're up that way, take a look at it, it's turned out good. We're doing some grading work up there around the playground. I'm sure there's probably a couple other things we're doing this summer, too, but I can't pick of them off the top of my head.
Is the repair of the roadway at EC3 on the, of the couple places that have fallen out in the main driveway, EC3, is that in the, in the mix?
We're going to knock those out.
That's good. Because you could drop a car in one of them right next to it.
That's all I had. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, it brings us down to the consideration of the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is somewhat lengthy, but a whole lot of it is the same thing that seem like we have approvals each month on. There's some TV contracts with City of Red Cliff for council meetings and the E-Town City Council, approval assurances for federal year 2020, and there's some agreements between the Kentucky Educational Collaborative for State Agency Children, and Creekside Elementary going to go to Natural, Arch, Yahoo Falls, Martin Station, Hummerlu Gap, Iron Furnace. I think they'll take a nice little trip on town. Approval request for merger of the Lori Garden Skills U with Heartland Adult Education Consortium.
Did you need to speak on that, Ms. Kelly at all?
If you have questions, I could, but do you want me to?
If you all have questions, Ms. Kelly is here if you have any questions about that.
Do you want to give us a little update on it?
So within our consortium, we have five counties, and the state has mandated that every county provide six hours of service within their individual county for non-incarcerated personnel. This year, to look at the smaller counties, they have authorized us to absorb the smaller counties into other counties, which leads into Harden County being able to serve the LaRue County non-incarcerated people in Harden County. They're fifteen minutes away. It's no longer a drive than our Radcliffe students that come in for testing. Those that don't live in the Hardenville proper can also be served in Hart County. So what we would like to do is have Harden County absorb the LaRue County Skills U. We would be Harden LaRue Skills U. As the fiscal agent, we are already in control of their money, their resources. It would not require us to hire anybody. Connie Goff is retiring, so this is why it was a perfect opportunity to do this merger. The state approves this now. Connie was retiring, and we have another person in Hart County who can actually work the LaRue County jail, so we don't have to hire anybody new, and it would actually save the consortium or the LaRue County Skills U program twenty-seven thousand dollars a year by doing this, which we could use for other resources. We will like to put a person there for the first couple of months at the library, but that's a current staff, to try to connect the people. When they come and say, "Where do I go for my services?", we're going to direct you to Hart County or Harden County. And this is just one of the processes of being a more regional program instead of just individual counties.
Better utilization of services.
Approved the orders of the treasurer, we received the school activity fund balance, custodial supply bid, and approval of bond of depository pledged by JP Morgan Chase at a hundred and three percent of David Ponce's, and approved the fidelity bonds of the treasurer for John Stiff and Finance Director Jessica Anis.
What is the intelligence services contract?
It's a great question. I'm glad you asked. We actually have a couple individuals here to speak on energy tonight, if the board would be okay with that.
It's Kyle Lucas.
Absolutely. We're very fortunate to have our energy manager, Mr. Kyle Lucas. He's starting his first year, and he's doing a fantastic job. I thought it would be a good idea for Kyle to stop in and just show you what you're getting for your money, so...
That's good.
Is this the same as the information paper on the energy system?
It'd be very similar, yes, ma'am. We're kind of combining two things here into one. And after Kyle goes, I think he's going to introduce his guest that he partners with.
I told him I had you on number nine there, maybe I was a line too low.
Like I say, my name is Kyle Lucas, and I just want to take this time to go over with you all about how I've been saving the district some money since I've become energy manager back in August the eighteenth. Starting out, I spent a lot of my time going through all the utility accounts and familiarizing myself with all those bills, trying to see if there was any low-hanging fruit that we could grab and cut as a district. And in doing so, I found these accounts that I think Mr. Stiff shared with you all. There were six electric accounts that I was able to renegotiate the contracts on, as well as three water accounts that we changed the water meter size, depending on the usage that we used at those buildings, and one water account that we went to a trailer at Lincoln Trail that we're no longer using, that we were paying for, that we just went ahead and discontinued that account. And if you look at the top of the page here, you can see where I renegotiated those six accounts, and to the right of that, you'll see the actual savings that we've seen on those accounts once those accounts were changed.
If we could pause Kyle just for a minute.
Okay.
This might be something that we could put up on the big board here for everybody. Give me just a minute. I'll get it up there for you.
I thought maybe we were going into the spy business or something.
Couldn't figure out what that was.
Right there, yeah, that's it. Okay. Okay, uh, like I say, there was several accounts that I looked at and was able to renegotiate the six electric contracts that were up there at the top there, you'll see those. Uh, and based on the times those accounts changed, you'll see in that right column there, the actual savings that we have received on those accounts, as well as the year-to-date, you know, base savings based off of those actual savings that we've received thus far. Um, if you'll go down to the reduced water meter sizes there, it'll show you where I took central office, uh, John Harden Athletic and the IT TV building where we reduced those water meter sizes. And you'll see those savings there as well. The one for the IT TV hasn't been changed yet, so it's kinda still in progress, uh, on the savings. But overall savings I see is $494 on that account. Uh, Lincoln Trail was the other one that I talked about, that we found a meter that was no longer being used and that money right there, 229, that was saved, uh, from here on out on that account. Uh, moving back up to the LED, uh, lighting project there, uh, was done at the start of my position and we converted all the school light fixtures over to LED. And you can see in the last 10 months where we have saved the district $6,110 on that account alone. And once you look over these all accounts, you can see that we've roughly saved the district $28,685. And that money will continue to be saved year after year with the first year showing a projected savings of around $47,000. Uh, another thing that I've started to work on for the district is getting our schools back to Energy Star certified. And you'll see there that I have three schools thus far that qualify to be an Energy Star certified. And once I get with an engineer and we confirm those criterias and the submittals are opened back up, I plan on getting those schools, you know, Energy Star certified. Next, I just wanna talk a little bit about what we do inside the school, uh, that helps educate others about energy. Um, that I think is very impactful and important to help educate staff and students about good energy use behavior and that we tend not to pay so much attention to if we were unaware. And how we do that, first off, each school has a green team consisted of three to five kids and a green team sponsor. And what they do is they go through the building at least once a month and perform an energy walkthrough. And what they're trying to do with those walkthroughs is catch any kind of energy, uh, any type of electrical waste and educate others on how to cut down on those wastes as well. Also, I work as an advisor and support them in any way that they need me to be. And lastly, I also perform my own energy audits quarterly where I report my findings back to each school principal and green team sponsor so we can collaborate and try to eliminate some of those, uh, wastes that we have.
What are you doing in energy audit? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
What are you doing, what is?
I was getting ready to get to that. I've got, I've got a couple of energy audits there that I put in there as well. They'll probably be on another, it was sent in on another.
There's another engine.
Yeah.
It might be on the.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
If you look there at John Harden, um, what I do is a little bit more, uh, more specific than what the students do. They focus more on the electrical waste, your, your light switches, your coffee pots and, and what have you. I kinda look at the whole building as a whole, I look at the, you know, the HVAC with my HVAC background, uh, the lighting, the plumbing, and your actual structure of the building. Uh, up at the top, you'll see where I found two heat pumps that was running continuous. And I went and inspected that out and found two bad fan relays. Was able to get that over to maintenance and have that addressed and taken care of next day down at the plumbing department on that. You can also see where I found several sinks that was leaking in the kitchen that may have gone unnoticed otherwise. Uh, I found a final rinse solenoid on the dishwasher that was just dumping water down the drain. And those are other things that we was able to get a hold of maintenance and get them right on and get that fixed right away. As opposed, as opposed to finding out later. Uh, and the other one I've got is Lakewood Elementary. Just kinda give you, you know, the difference between a high school and an elementary, it should be on the same one, wouldn't it?
It may not.
If not, that's okay, yeah. So I can just talk to you about that. Lakewood, we found, you know, a door sweep that wasn't, uh, wasn't working, we was letting in a lot of outside air on it. Was able to get that addressed. And also, when I done my walkthrough, maybe a little bit of vandalism was done in the bathrooms and the sinks were left on. So we was going on spring break, had that been unnoticed or uncopped there, we could've had a huge water bill. Was able to catch that and prevent that from costing us as a district a lot of money there. And if we go back to the projects up at the top there. Show you little projects that I was wanting to, you know, get approved once we, you know, get to. Uh, first thing is kind of a low-cost, low-reward type project. The HVAC system on West Harden for the kitchen and the cafeteria is running 24/7. Just right there, up just a little bit.
Yep, right there.
Uh-huh. Uh, it's running 24/7 and that's kind of something we can do in-house. Just put a, you know, programmable stat on and be able to control that to where they're not running throughout the night when nobody is occupying the building. Um, but I see the savings there, so we're planning on getting on that pretty soon. Uh, working on the controls at North, or Central Harden, Ninth Grade Wing. Uh, right now, that whole wing just kinda turns on all the HVAC equipment all at once. And if we had some event where we've got a few offices that are in that area, then to turn those offices on, we have to turn on the whole wing. And I'd like to be able to separate that. That's gonna be a little more costly because it'll involve programming from, uh, Herschel Train to come in and help us and outside contractors. Uh, but that's something as well that I could see that's saving the districts some money. Uh, nextly is kind of a higher, higher cost, uh, but a higher reward. Uh, is taking the pumps at John Harden, Lakewood, and Woodland and keeping those from running. Currently, they're running 24/7, we don't have any control over them. Uh, they're just running standalone. And if you look down below there, I've got Lakewood, uh, projected savings on Lakewood alone is just on the KWH. There is no demand charge there of about $5,000 per year. Next below that is Woodland Elementary. It's got a demand charge, but on the KWH alone, we're looking at about a $2,300 savings if we do that project.
That is amazing.
And if you'll scroll down there, John Harden, we've got three pump packages there. That's why it's split up between the kitchen, the pack, and the classrooms. Uh, but altogether, an overall savings, and this is on just K, on your usage as well, is $10,654 that we could save if we done this project as well. As a demand, you know, cost of savings that we would see too, on top of that $10,000.
And that's a year, every year?
That's a year, every year, yes, correct.
What kind of money are you talking about possibly to change that?
Uh.
Correct that problem to gain that money? Are you spending over $10,000 to do it?
Well, that's something that I need to get with my friends at Herschel Train here and we'll run some numbers and I'd be glad to get those back to you.
Okay.
All right, next on the agenda here, uh, I just wanna flip over the page here and go to the last part of it. Uh, I wanna go over you, with you, the total utility cost. Uh, what this is, is, uh, is based on a physical school year. Oh, back up, back up. Sorry, I wasn't looking up. And those are the, the account, go on up right there. That's up just a little, right there.
Correct.
Okay, and, uh, this is a total summary, uh, from July to June, which of course, we've got, you know, two more months of bills you'll see there on 2018, months of, uh, May and June that need to be added to that. Uh, but I can talk to you more about that. What we're looking at is at 2015, you can see how we progressively went up, uh, from year to year. And we had, uh, an overall commodities charge of about 2.8, uh, at 2017 school year. And right now, at 2018, we're looking at about 2.23, which I'm projecting to see us around the 2.55, 2.6 range. So for an overall commodity savings of around $250,000. Um, if you'll scroll down there to the electric bills right there, you can see that the, the overall commodities is reflected highly on the electrical usage that we see in the schools. Um, out of the 2.8 million, we had actually 2.4, um, charged as of last year. And right now, with just the months of May and June left to add, we're at 1.8. But I'm projecting, uh, 2018 school year to be about 2.24, which would give us an overall savings on electric account of $151,958. Uh, and just a little comparison, break down that electrical bill in your KWH usage there. Not really seeing a whole lot of savings there as far as usage goes. We're probably gonna hit that 23, uh, million mark, just the same as we were last year, but hopefully just a little bit less. What we really try to focus on is the demand and, uh, and try to keep that down because where the usage charge is just a few cents per KWH, the demand can range anywhere from $6 to $22 a kilowatt, depending on the time of year and the time of day that those accounts are actually looked at there. Uh, but you can scroll down there to the demand, yeah, it's got it right there. The KW for last year, we was at 103,012. Right now, we're at 85,000 and I project this to be anywhere between 101 and 102. So looking at about 1,000 KW savings there, which, you know, may not sound like a lot, but the way these rates are structured, we get, you know, hit pretty hard on demand. If we hit it, we hit our P, the next 11 months, we're paying for it. So we, we try our best to keep an eye on the demand. And with that being said, uh, one of the reasons we have a partnership with Herschel Train through a program called Intelligent Services, where they can actually help us monitor that demand through a program called Demand Limiting that goes with our building automation system and kinda sets back our HVAC systems, uh, when that demand starts to creep up. And if, uh, no one has any questions about that, I would like to introduce Ms. Kristi Fetch. Uh, she is our lead representative for Intelligent Services and she can explain a little more about that program and how it's been working for us as a district.
Thank you, Kyle.
As you can see, Kyle's been hard at it his first year.
Yeah.
All right, I'm Kristi Fetch. I did always wanna be like in the FBI, that was like my ultimate dream. So Intelligent Services is the closest I'm gonna get to that problem. So it's not the first time I've heard of that.
That's funny.
Usually I get, I get really bad jokes, they'll say like, well, what's the rest of Herschel Train, stupid? And I'm like, oh, no, no, I mean it like that. Yes, but, um, so I was here last year and did an update. So just a brief, um, reminder, so in 2017, Harden County Schools engaged with Herschel Train for an Intelligent Services program pilot at two schools. It was at John Harden and Central Harden. And, uh, so this, so I'm gonna give you an update on that and then some money updates and then tell you where the program's gone so far. So this is our language, this is, you know, Herschel Train language for what is Intelligent Services. Um, Kyle did a great job speaking to, you know, what he, what he's been doing. And it's really a collaboration together with the facilities team and with Kyle and his role. Um, I just wanna make sure I set that straight, that it is not in competition with Kyle, it is a resource to Kyle and his team. Um, if you wanna go to the next slide, just, oh, this is a little bit, this is an eye chart for you all. Um, if you absolutely have the, have that document in front of you, uh, so you can get closer. But wanted to break down, you know, we say Intelligent Services and what does that actually mean? So there's multiple components to it. Energy is a large factor of that and we want to really, um, drive energy savings to pay for the program costs. But then what else is there? Um, cospo to the Energy Star certification, that takes a professional engineer to actually submit that for you, stamp it, and get that done on your own behalf. So that's part of the program that's included, is taking care of those certifications for you. Um, other pieces that have made an impact here in the district are, uh, real-time building monitoring. So we were doing that at John Harden and Central Harden over, um, what's now the last two years. And watching for things that are running, uh, either 24/7 or starting to see some anomalies in the system so that we know something's not working correctly and let's catch it before it becomes a large, uh, problem that could cause a shutdown and, and, you know, having to close a school or, um, a very expensive problem or an emergency. Uh, the other piece is, you know, we actually have been helping with the IT support here. So technology has come a long way through the years and now your buildings are actually IT assets as well. They have building automation that resides on servers. And so your IT, uh, is keeping those servers up and so we're supporting them with their, as they're doing security updates and that, making sure it's not impacting the building operation or what Kyle and the facilities team can see remotely. Um, also, we work on, uh, we have a remote technical support. So similar to if you have an iPhone and you call Apple Support and have a help desk, we have trained technicians that are in Louisville, they're based out of Louisville, um, that your team can call. It's at no additional charge. And I'll show you a little bit further in here, um, you know, what kinda impact that's had on the district, so. So these are just some, this is just in the last 12 months. So, so we did our first pilot year from 2017 to 2018 and now we're looking at 2018 to current. Um, so 32 times in the last, uh, 12 months, if the Harden County District reached out to our help desk, which is awesome. Uh, this is not, uh, this is not us taking away from the district, this is us trying to provide training. You know, it's kinda like on the job training, they have questions, they're working through. Kyle gets into the system and he's doing a fantastic job because of his HVAC background and what updates he can do and, and do it on his own. And so when he runs into maybe, uh, a roadblock, he can reach out and have help that way. Uh, so that becomes an operational savings as well. You no longer have to have a technician come to the site, pay to have a technician on the site, we're helping remotely. Uh, we did cover for two attendees to try, to go to our training class, um, on the building automation, which also, again, helps just keeping those that are working in the system up to date on what the technology's doing and how it works. Um, some of those other points are just where we've helped catch maybe things that are running 24/7 or, uh, things that were just not even noticed, that were, you know, not even part of the building automation system, just making sure that they're all working together. And so because we've reached a point with John Harden and Central Harden that we've really squeezed the savings out that we can without making any huge investments, we've decided that we're gonna integrate GC Burkhead and Bluegrass Middle into the program. Kinda keep, uh, John Harden and Central Harden in a sustained mode. We wanna keep our eyes on them so that they don't start to drip and lose the savings they've already achieved. But we wanna go ahead and start moving our major focus to GC Burkhead and Bluegrass. So these are the financial impacts. So in 2017 to 2018, you can see the total savings of this year. Now, this is raw energy savings. So when I say that, this doesn't take into account anything qualitative, this is just straight from your utility bills. Uh, we validate this quarterly, so we work with the facilities team and Kyle, we meet quarterly to go through. Here's what our findings are, here's where the impacts have been, and we, we brainstorm together. So it's a collaborative effort. The first year really is always a building year. We're really trying to get the building profiles and understand the data and then attack it. So that's where you could see in 2018 to 2019, we don't even have all the utilities bills in yet and, um, we're at 21,900. So well-covered the cost of the program, um, and then some. And then had just a few of the, um, qualitative pieces that don't get captured and that is, you know, the collaboration with Kyle and the facilities team and working to extend the asset life. You know, Kyle talked a lot about things running 24/7 or the pumps, looking at those pumps and, and they're just running hard, run hard, and that shortens their life. And those are expensive pieces of equipment, assets to the building that we wanna make sure, let's get all the life out of them that we can. Um, and we've done all of this and I have to commend the team without impacting comfort to the students or to the staff. And that's important because your business is comfortable learning environments and we wanna provide good indoor air quality, we don't wanna impact it negatively. Um, and so then you've also had the additional operational spend that was avoided from having service calls, things of that nature, and then the training provided. So real quick, so this is how we benchmark, how, not just we as Herschel Train, but the industry benchmarks buildings, just like a student gets a report card. Energy Usage Index is how buildings get a report card. And so it's just basically the amount of energy, gas and electric, da va da buzz, condition square foot. So I just wanted to kinda give you a perspective of the average school has a score of 50. Um, and you can see that your schools are below that, you know, you've got a, Central Harden has a little bit higher, but you're right in line. So you may be like, well, why do we pick GC Burkhead and Bluegrass even concentrate on going forward? You wanna go to the next slide? Sure. So that, something that correlates this is the Energy Cost Index, which is the amount of money it costs per condition square foot to run. So we just saw that Bluegrass Middle had a very low energy usage index, but now it's got the same as Central Harden as the operating cost. So Kyle spoke to this about the, what we call KW or the demand. That's the most expensive energy that a building uses. So based on rates here in this, um, in your region, Kyle mentioned it could be from $6 per unit all the way up to $22 per unit. And so that's why it's important when you're monitoring to figure out, let's, where do you attack? Do you attack the usage or do you attack the demand? And so looking at your all's profile, the demand is really where we focus. So this is, um, just wanted to go in a little bit further that, so for Bluegrass and Burkhead, uh, GC Burkhead, excuse me. Uh, the demand cost is there in the green and it makes up a fourth of your utility bills there. And so you're, that's the most expensive piece, so we wanna work to drive that piece down. Um, and that's where we'll start off our focus. And that's where we'll start off our focus. So our, what's next is we want to leverage the investments you've already made and sustain the results that we've had at John Harden and Central Harden. We want to go ahead and start driving results and impacts at GC Burkhead and Bluegrass. And then, you know, eventually, we'd like to keep looking at what schools can we put into the fold. So when you asked about the Intelligent Services contract, that contract was a two-year contract, and that is up for renewal. So what we're looking at is sustaining the two at John Harden and Central Harden, but then also putting GC Burkhead and Bluegrass into the fold. So the, I think, I believe they have a copy of the contract? Okay. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to have it answered.
Questions?
So like, like last year, but, but better?
But better, yeah. Keep going, keep going on.
Thank you. Tell all the rest of the family how.
I'm sorry?
I said, "Thank you," and tell all the rest of the family how.
Oh, yes, thank you. I know. Can't leave those in the flyers anywhere.
John?
Yeah, Mr. Stuckers never had a loss for words, but I don't know, Joe, did you have anything you wanted to add? Joe's a pretty, obviously a pretty important part of all this.
I would just like to echo what they both said, is that we've made great strides in our, in our energy management, in our savings for the district. And with what Kyle's doing and what Harshaw Train is doing through the Intelligent Services contract that we have, I think we can continue to save for our district and we can continue to, to do great things for the students. So, yeah, we just need to keep going forward. That's all I have.
We appreciate it. Thank you all. Okay, so rest of the consent agenda, human resources. We're approving a 1% cost of living raise for all employees, physical year 20. And we're approving the 2019-2020 salary schedules. And then, Ms. Laney, as we received the site-based council decision minutes and pack information. Anything else anyone want to ask about or include or delete?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda. Any other discussion? Not, all in favor, signify a saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And that takes us down to new business.
Why do we have executive session on here twice?
We will not need either of those executive sessions.
Oh, we not having that?
We will have a very short one at the end for Mr. Stith, just to speak of...
Update?
Update of litigation.
I was wondering about that. And so... Superintendent, don't have a report on here this time, so you could?
Yes, although I do want to do some shout-outs, if that's all right. We have, the last time we were here, we were preparing for our high school graduations. But I hope you had the opportunity to see those on TV because that is a culmination of all the hard work that has gone into all of those students. You saw the yellow cords, which stands for that outstanding GPA and hard work. You had our students who graduated with an associate's degree when they left Harden County Schools. You had 500 students who earned work ethic certification. So if you get a chance to watch that, and it is just a very proud moment to be part of Harden County Schools when you see the great things that, our product is our students, so the great products we produce and the hard work and dedication of all those that made that happen all the way from cradle school all the way up to kindergarten. I know they say everything you need to know, you learned in kindergarten. Probably a lot of that is very true, but we look forward to the great things that happen. Also, just a side note, our Cruisin' Cafe, as you recall, Josie Crewe added a second one to that. And they are, each of the locations is serving triple the amount of meals they were serving to students last year. Received that from her. So just a big shout-out for all the hard work that everybody put into our graduates and to make sure our students are taken care of over the summer. It doesn't happen without a lot of hard work and dedication.
That's great. So, we're going to take a short executive session, but before we leave...
We don't need one. We did that earlier today.
Not, nothing we have to do?
We're doing nothing, just the one with him, and we'll come back and make no decision. It's just information.
So I have something to say. As a month or so ago, I heard from one of our board members that she was going to track off to another country, I think, like Nevada. And I just, we don't know when it's going to be. This may be her last meeting, broadcast meeting. We probably will have another special meeting, but I want to say that Andrea has been an excellent board member. She's been dedicated. She has children in the system. She's been committed and professional. She's done a great job with the Water Board, and it's going to be missed. And we appreciate her service here in case...
Don't you cry.
In case she's not back with us for a televised meeting. We really appreciate what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
I'll cry if I try.
All right.
She loves us.
We'll miss you. If you want to come back, we'll try to find a spot.
Just might be a number two.
It just might be a number two.
But we appreciate you. Great family. One side of us from the Clarks, and I know them well, and a great husband, great kids. I've tried to get her to keep one of her loved ones here with me, but she says she's going to...
You can have him.
She's referring to the puppy dog, right?
She was going to give you a dog, and I chose her child.
I just needed to clarify that that is a puppy dog, that's not a child.
We're good to go. Need a motion to adjourn?
No, we got to do the superintendent's evaluation.
Oh, yeah, we got one more superintendent's evaluation. Let's do that.
Hey, go.
Hey, I'm going to let you do that one.
All right, you're going to let me do that. I get to do that every year. In June every year, we're required to evaluate our superintendent. And we used a new form this year. I'm not sure, they seem to change this form every year, but anyway. And we do get training in evaluating the superintendent. We're required to have training to do that. So I think we do a really good job. So I, I do a summary of the evaluation. So, and this summary is, as I said, is a composite of all five of our evaluation forms. And there are seven standards, seven leadership standards that we rank our superintendent on. And I'm not going to go through them individually, but I will tell you that five of the seven we ranked as exemplary, which is the highest mark you can get. And two were ranked as accomplished, which is the next highest mark you can get. So as in everything this board does, the majority rules. So because there were five in the exemplary category, we are ranking this overall evaluation as exemplary. The board comments were positive, and lots of evidence was listed to support the scores. The board expressed complete confidence in Mrs. Morgan's leadership and congratulates her for another great year. We are confident that the 2019-2020 year will be another outstanding year for the district. The board unanimously believes that the superintendent has the district continuously improving in all areas. And we are convinced we have the best superintendent in Kentucky and possibly anywhere. So needs to say we are very satisfied with your evaluation.
Thank you.
So I would make the motion to approve the superintendent's evaluation.
Second.
Have a motion in two seconds. In two seconds. To prove the...
There was copies for everybody. Did you pass them?
Evaluation of the superintendent.
Just took the whole stack.
Pass them all around.
All in favor?
Terry wants to keep them all.
All in favor, signify a saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Do we need a motion to go into a short executive session? What are we discussing? Okay, I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation.
There will be no...
There will be no action when we come out tonight on there. We're just going to be informed of some... Okay, have a motion, are you second?
Second.
A motion in a second for executive session. All in favor, signify a saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Everyone have a safe holiday, and we'll look forward to seeing you in mid-July.